Uh, it is nineteen oh four, uh, seven oh four. Do I have a motion and a second to open our regular business?
I like the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. At this time, we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence. Uh, Mike can use that song.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our moment of silence will be in honor of Kevin Hipson, who recently passed away. He was our track coach for many years and was one of the leaders of getting our first true all surface track back in the nineteen nineties. Thank you. Okay, can I have the approval of the board meeting agenda, a motion and a second? Motion.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Um, may I have a motion and a second to approve, uh, I'm sorry, we just did that. I'm on repeat mode. Oh, now we have presentations. We have the Emerald Ash Bore effects on ash trees by the ESF Research Group, uh, led by Casey Stenfrenes and the Research Team.
Hi, I'm Gabe Torres, um, thank you guys all for having us. I've been doing this for four years now, and over the past four years, I've learned that it's very important to do the field research that we do. We are helping to preserve a species of trees that is native to our area from a very important threat, which is the Emerald Ash Bore, which has had detrimental effects on it so far. Tonight, uh, we are practicing an important part of the scientific method, which is sharing our findings.
Hi, my name is Johnson Carrery. And there are three teams in the Science Field Research Program. The first team is the field team that collects the data from every single tree and surveys the trees. Then, we give the surveys to the data team that analyzes all the data. Lastly, the parasitoid team that releases the parasitoids and their effect on the EAB and ash population.
Hi, my name is Naomi Wer, and this is my first year here. Um, ash trees are trees that are widely spread across America. These trees are known for their high go and canopy and diamond shaped bark. Um, we've been studying the white ash trees, although there are variations of these, like the white, black, and green ones. Also, the Emerald Ash Bores are buds that were discovered in the summer of two thousand and two, and they appeared in southeastern Michigan and Detroit. Um, these buds start off as eggs, and then it's when it's a larvae that eat through the tree's tissues, and they cause death to the tree because the tree can't get the nutrients.
Hi, my name is Jeremy Grumman, and when the beetles are in the trees, there are many signs that they're like, that they're, that they are there, like lack of bark, dehols, epicormic shoots, and patterned zebra.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Fisher.
My name is Allison Carmen.
And these are procedures to surveying the trees. So, we survey them to see how healthy each tree is. We look for things such as woodpecker damage, epicormic shoots with, which appear when the tree are really stressed.
And most importantly, the canopy cover, which shows how many leaves are still at the top of the tree. And we also measure the circumference and mark down the coord- coordinates and the quadrants that assign the tree or the tag.
Hi, I'm Gianna Deji. These charts on the screen represent the same trees originally surveyed back in two thousand twenty-one. The black section represents the inconsistent data. In three years, we have recorded an ash tree mortality rate increase of thirty-eight percent, and roughly forty to forty-two percent of ash trees are still healthy and experiencing lingering health.
Hello, I'm Sam Enz. This is a map of the Bradley Learning Reserve, as well as all the surveyed trees in that area. As you can see, most of the ash trees are situated in the east and they're, and they appear to be very scarce in the north. You can also see that most trees have a red insignia, which means that they have a vacant or absent canopy, which is a sign of low health and is likely due to the Emerald Ash Bore.
Hello, I'm Matthew Plutch. Um, twenty-one, twenty twenty-one started off good with seven point four of the ash trees with only having a very bad canopy cover of five. And moving on to twenty twenty, it, the number increased a little bit. And in twenty twenty-three, however, we see a large increase from seven point four to twenty-five point nine. We got more perfect canopy co- oh, in twenty twenty-four, we got more perfect canopy covers of eleven point one. We also see a, a larger increase to to bad canopy covers of thirty-seven point nine. They, the canopy covers are getting better, but they're also getting worse.
Hello, I'm Julian Jacob. On this chart is a representation of total amount of trees, percentage of each canopy level, and the percentage of trees reached level that had vines. Our original hypothesis had been that trees of higher canopy levels would have higher vines, but in the end, that turned out untrue as the highest percentage for vines ended up being level three, so there is no correlation between the two.
I'm Gideon Torres, and over the course of the summer, we researched some trails in Port Jervis as well. We found between Port Jervis and the Branderwine Trails, most of the trees in Branderwine were much healthier, the canopies were more lush, the bark was more intact. And overall, the trees were just in better condition than those in Port Jervis.
Hi, I'm Jenna Whitney, and I'm explaining what biocontrol is. Biocontrol is the use of an organism in control of, or suppress the population of another organism. In our case, the invasive species of Emerald Ash Bore are in a bio-controlled environment. They are being controlled by three types of parasitic wasps from New York. The D swas were reared by the USDA Avis Program.
Hi, my name is Ishmael Gill. And here on this slide, we have a picture of each species. The Spathius galne, which has a long antenna and a depositor. The Tetrasstigus planipensis, which has yellow legs and a long abdomen. And the Ubius agriely. A shorter antenna than the Tetrasstigus planipensis, and a long add abdomen.
My name is Nick Van Horn, I'm here to tell you the three ways we release. First would be releasing the ovinators, which have eggs that hatch and spread. The ashbowl have larva and the you have larva in the ashbowl which develop and come out. Then we release them living, which are those that disperse, oh, out to the ash trees.
Hello, my name is Frank Shannon, and, um, to describe how we then, uh, collected samples and, um, figured out if our, uh, wasps were doing well, we did a population survey, survey, where we took tape and we wrapped them around the trees. And if the, um, the wasps end up landing on the tape, then we were able to look at them under the microscope and count the population. So, we ended up getting less of the TP variants, um, than some of the others, although there are many different factors. Um, it could have been that the males look similar to another one of the species, um, or that the females actually die after laying their eggs. Um, however, we figured that overall more research is needed, um, which leads me on to the next slide. Um, where we ended up just counting the total populations of all the inspe- insects that we caught, and found that most of the insects were actually mites or pill bugs. Um, the top graph is with the mites and the bottom one is without. Um, and we, from this information, we deduced that since mites and pill bugs are both detritus, um, feeding insects, um, we figured that most of the trees that we collect samples from were, um, dying or already dead. Um, and so, uh, the, the ones that we found more of the wasp plant tend to have le- less of the, um, mites and pill bugs. Um, so, we, we feel that there is a, um, a good correlation between the wasps and surviving ash trees. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Shane Seeger. Uh, so as you heard, a lot of the trees we saw were kind of dead, got mites, pill bugs, not that great. But, we did notice something, compared to twenty twenty-three, if you look there on our rating chart, five being a dead tree, one being the most healthiest trees, you'll notice that the trees that were the most healthy actually increased by a grand two point seven percent. Now, you'll also notice the dead trees increased, but most of them are already dying, which meant they died this year. But it's the healthier trees increasing that we're really looking at, because that means that there's actually hope. Compared to all of them dying next year and having a net negative last year, we finally have a decent positive this time. So, the wasps are clearly helping. Uh, so hopefully, next time we do a bug survey or a tree survey, we'll see more live trees, and then we're gonna see less pill bugs, uh, less mites, and we're gonna see hopefully more wasps and more other insects. And hopefully, those numbers will increase by a bit more than two point seven, but for now, it's a start.
Hi, my name is Jayden Malat, and this is a diagram of our canopies one through five. And our canopies that are one are the greatest, and they have went up two point seven percent. And yes, we have trees that had died, but we can't like protect those more. But compared to twenty twenty-three, the more trees are doing better.
Hi, my name is Camaria Williams, and I will be talking about the quadrant studies. The purpose of this investigation was to analyze and observe, and also compare the surrounding environment of ash trees affected by the Emerald Ash Bore. Um, quadrant one was really healthy. The, we looked at biodiversity inside of it. While unfortunately, by quadrant two, it wasn't as healthy as quadrant one because the canopy, the canopy wasn't as healthy as the other trees.
Hi, my name is Julia Ossman. In quadrant one, it consisted largely of healthy ash trees, and the surrounding environment was, had a very high biodiversity, and had various healthy plant species surviving and thriving within the area.
Hi, my name is Francesca. And in quadrant two, there's less biodiversity, as well as the dominant species being moss, woodlock, and crop grass.
Hi, my name is Brendan McDermott. Uh, and our conclusion for this year was, we were very productive with a decent amount of new members joining us for this year. We did a lot of resurveying of our old stuff, just looking for trees that we might have missed last year. We did, we got a lot of more info on biocontrol to hopefully get rid of the Emerald Ash Bore. We even went to a new area of research at the Port Jervis Watershed Trails, and we're hoping to continue our research for next year, and maybe get rid of that one.
Hi, I'm Laura Lloyd, and this is my first year. Being that, as was previously mentioned, our ash trees are not doing as well, we decided that planting some new ones would be a good idea. And so, we plan on collecting ash seeds and nurturing them so that we can plant them, and we will continue to have ash trees.
Hi, my name is Matthew Kibler, and we'd like to give a special thanks to the Port Jervis School District for offering this course, the U D ESF, and Dr. Diamond for offering the school credits, and, and Branderwine Institute, and the Port Jervis Watershed Trails for the research use of the, the use of their research facilities.
I don't have anything to say, I think they did a great job.
They did a great job!
And we're excited about, you know, a little bit of growth, and hopefully, next year, we see a little bit more growth. What was that? Oh yeah, do you have questions? Close answer questions. You're hiding.
I think they should all come out.
Alright, come on, guys.
Great job.
All of you did a great job.
Does anyone else have questions? Then I can ask the questions.
I have one question.
No, go ahead, please.
When you collect the ash seeds and then nurture them, how long does it take before you can transplant them back into the ground? Or is it done immediately?
Um, I don't think building a grass is gonna like that answer. Sorry. Um, actually, for the first time that we've done this research, we did find a tree with seeds on it. So, we've been out in the field for four years, and we've never found a sitting ash tree. This year we did, so we'll collect in the fall. We have extensive research that we have to continue to go through. Um, and I'm not sure how long it'll take them to get there, probably three to four year old saplings. Price is free to go though. Somewhere we will find a room for some active saplings.
So, my question is, someone had mentioned that Port Jervis versus, uh, a trail, Port Jervis' trees were worse than the trail. Does anyone know why?
You mean the Branderwine Reserve against Port Jervis Trails? Um, I think it's because a lot of the trees, at least from what St. Kymas quotes, a lot of the trees that we've surveyed so far, um, on the bottom of the trails are kind of mostly dead. But hopefully, uh, as you go further up on the trails, more will be alive. So, that's kind of, uh, the idea behind that. We just haven't really gotten enough time to survey all the trees and the trails just yet. So, when we're done with that, you'll probably see a lot more alive, uh, trees in the trails, and so, yeah.
And so, my question is, so, part of the benefit is by you releasing wasps, is that correct? Or wasps being released? Are there any concerns about a residual effect of now all these wasps running around?
Um, so far, from all of the FDA's studies and the various different organizations who have used these biological controls, there's been no, like, detrimental effect on the current environment that we have. And that's why we're able to bring them in and have them attack the dangerous bugs.
Nice.
Okay. This is called defending your research. So, I'm not defending, now, now this is just another question. How many of you are going with teacher Stankunas out to Montana? Raise your hands.
Oh, Yellowstone?
Yeah, nice!
My final question is, how come I don't see any young ladies raising their hands for this opportunity? Why, why aren't you going, young lady?
I don't know.
Why aren't you going?
Had enough of the outdoors.
How about you? Does anybody want to go that can't go?
Come on, I'm sure we can take you.
My parents won't feel comfortable.
That's fine, we'll take you.
Yellowstone was the wrong thing to do.
We'll take you, that's fine.
Yeah, Yellowstone's a big place.
I know.
Alright, so, so, alright, well, well, thank you all for answering my questions, I appreciate it. And it was a wonderful presentation.
Thank you.
Great job, everybody.
Nice work. Nice work, case. Nice work, Ms. Stankunas.
Nice job, everybody.
Alright, moving right along, that brings us to our public comment section. We have a low santini.
Oh my goodness! I'll, I'll be the You want a podium? Somebody do the timing.
What do you want me to do? The mic?
Need the mic.
I need the mic?
Yeah, so they can hear you at home.
We know we can hear you here.
Now, honestly.
This camera will get you, see that camera, quite that way?
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Administration, board members, and everyone at home behind me. Um, I'm here tonight threefold. Um, first and foremost, uh, my September eleventh service is coming up. Uh, September eleventh, eight thirty in the morning. I'm already in touch with the school. Uh, I know they send up a musical with the music teachers, they get together, but everybody, I don't know if you got the letter yet to pass it around to the board members, but it should be there or coming. You know that it's, it's a very solemn day for us, and the more people we have, the more people that could express how they feel that happened that day, and I know many of yous have been there for many years, and I thank you for that. Second is my, my, I call it mine. Uh, honor flight, my honor flight's coming up. I've been in touch with Jean Marie about the bus that would come over with the students. That is gonna be October nineteenth. Um, they would, should be, the veterans should arrive back about eight thirty. They say eight thirty, they never know, but, you know, it depends upon weather, the flight, if there's something that happened, but eight thirty is usually the time at night. And you know how I feel about that also, it's my baby, and I am, I don't know if I've mentioned it, maybe I have, that if anybody in the listening audience, if they have, know a veteran anywhere from World War Two, which we do have a handful that are still alive, please get them to us, Korean, Cold War, Vietnam, make an application, if you want to be a guardian, make an application for, to be a guardian on the flight. It's something that is so rewarding that you, you have to do it in order to know what we are talking about. And now, I'd like to, is my time up yet?
No.
Here we go, no. And I'm gonna, and I, and I hope I don't get too emotional, but twenty years in the making, twenty years. Um, there were times I sat on this board and I would not put a penny into the middle school, the middle school, which now is gonna be the elementary school. I've taken a tour, I think this is my third or fourth time. And to know that the kids, and I'm sorry I say kids, to children, even the teachers, the staff, are gonna be in a safe and sound building. And I thank from Mike White Dell, all the way up to Dr. Bell, but every resident, every voter who voted on a referendum that came aboard, that came on this. If it wasn't for them, we wouldn't be here packing up, I'm sorry, Mr. Bon Jovi, we're packing up and going. Um, but, that school's gonna be awesome, and you're gonna have to talk about it from years to come. And I saw a lot of extension courts tonight, but I know they're gonna be gone, but that was my thing, that was my beef on the third floor every time I went up there. But, I thank everyone, everyone who put their heart and soul into this project. Because if it wasn't for, I sat outside for a good half hour tonight on the wall, on the wall, and I watched the workers, I watched the, the staff. And every staff member, whether they carried a box, or rolled a cart, or did what they had to do. Them too, all your staff, all your teachers, your aides, everybody who's gonna get the school ready for, and everybody who's getting this school ready for the middle school to come here. I thank you, because it's gonna be something that we're gonna be so proud of. Not that we weren't proud before, but it's gonna be a shining star for the Port Jervis School District. And I wanna thank you all, and I need to thank you from the bottom of my heart. And that's all I have to say. Any questions?
Thank you, Flo.
Thank you very much. Good night, everybody.
Night. Thank you.
Here's my Thank you, guys. And any, Ms. Dell, Dr. Bell, anytime it's sports, you call me, um, we're, we're getting together with that. Okay. If your fields aren't ready, we'll be ready for you.
Alright, moving along, we are at administrative reports. Uh, first up, Superintendent of Schools, Dr. John Bell. Okay, should we have that microphone up here now? Would that help at the ease? Okay, uh, three things to cover today. First is summer construction. Uh, as you see, if you're out in the hallway here, uh, there's a lot of construction going on here at the old ASK to make it the middle school. There's also construction going on at the high school, over various renovations. Uh, but everything's on schedule and moving fine, uh, here at the high school, middle school. Uh, before our meeting tonight, we took a tour at five o'clock of the new elementary school over at East Main Street. And we had, uh, members of the Port Jervis City Council, the Deer Park Town Council, a whole host of retired teachers who worked in the middle school for literally decades. Uh, it was really a lot of fun to give them a little sneak peek before the official opening. Just a reminder to everybody, the grand reopening and dedication of the school uh, at East Main Street, uh, which will be dedicated to Mr. Tom Hoppy, will be on Saturday, August thirty-first, at one PM. Originally, it was slated for ten AM, but we moved it to one PM, uh, 'cause Mr. Hoppy recently passed away, and his funeral mass will be that morning. And so, the mass will be at ten AM, and then we'll have the dedication at one o'clock. Um, the third floor of the school is basically done, all the teacher materials and the desk and chairs are in the rooms. Uh, the second floor, I think there's three rooms that are getting tiled tomorrow and the next day, and then they'll be doing the hallway tile. So, really, by this weekend, the second floor will be completely ready. Um, on the first floor, the, the new wing, uh, they're doing the polyurethane on the gym floor. Um, the kindergarten classes all have the tile floors and the drop ceilings in. The remaining rooms to get, uh, flooring are the first grade rooms and the band and the general music rooms. Um, so that will happen later this week and into early next week. All the floors should be done by Tuesday, 'cause the teachers are back on Wednesday. We're actually hoping they'll be done on Monday, 'cause that would give us an extra day to move furniture. All the new furniture for the first two floors were delivered earlier this week, and our custodians have been putting the student desks and tables and chairs into the classrooms. In fact, they're probably doing it right now. Uh, they're also in the process of moving all the office, um, materials and supplies and computers and phones from ASK. They're doing that tonight, and then tomorrow, the middle school will populate the ASK office. And that, starting tomorrow, that will become the middle school office.
Maybe.
At least I can play a Mr. Bon Jovi like, "For the" Uh, the, uh, you saw in the pile here, these books will get boxed and sent to East Main, uh, on Thursday, and then all the stuff that's in the containers will come onto the shelves. That's the middle school library books, they'll come on the shelves probably Friday, with the company doing both of those moves for us. Uh, so, so there's a ton of work to do, but there's nothing that's stopping us from opening the school. School will open on time, and it's gonna be awesome. So, we welcome everybody to come again on Saturday, August thirty-first at one PM. And then, my last thing is I wanted to yield my time to the gentleman from ASK, soon to be East Main Street, uh, Mr. Cancredi, 'cause he wanted to say a few words.
Should I use the mic or not?
Yeah, they can't hear at home.
Yeah, here you go. Cancredi, Bon Jovi.
Thank you, Dr. Bell, uh, and I, I won't take too much time, but I just wanna say a few things, only because this has been a, a very special year for us here at ASK. Uh, it's been a very surreal year. Um, you know, we've been talking about this for years, oh, it's always gonna be in the future, it's in the future, and like, now the future is here, and we're living in the future, right? This is happening. So, all summer long, we knew, we saw the construction, we saw this going on, but today, it really hit us. Because today, it was, they were taking our stuff and moving it, moving it out. Um, so I'm not leaving, I'm gonna sleep in my office tonight, alright, so you may see me in the morning. But I just wanted to say, when I took the job, Mr. Sadiqah, you were on the board, and you had, you put the faith and trust in me, uh, to take this job, it was twelve years that I was here. Uh, and it's, we didn't know what was gonna happen with, with new buildings, so to be the last principal here at ASK is certainly an honor, you know, again- to be the last principal here at ASK is certainly an honor, you know, again, I'm not from Port Jervis, but it's, it's an honor to be the last principal, closing the doors here at ASK, and I just wanted to say thank you, thank you to the board for all the support, and the trust that you have in me to opening a new building at East Main, uh, because we are very excited to move in there, it's, it's a, it's a certainly an honor to be moving in there, and, and the luxury of even moving, moving into a, a new building, so I just wanted to say thank you, and we're looking forward to it, so.
Do you don't mind, you wanna say the date, kindergarten, parent?
Kindergarten orientation is Thursday, uh, August twenty ninth, five thirty to seven thirty, that's still on. Uh, letters went out Monday, they went out yesterday, uh, with some information for that, so the agenda and the schedule, uh, but Thursday, August twenty ninth, yeah, five thirty. I also wanted to, I was gonna, I was gonna do it tonight, but we have a new logo and a new motto, so maybe I'll just send it to you, Dr. Bell, and then you can send it out to the board. Uh, but we do have a new, new logo and a new motto.
What's the motto?
The motto is, it's East Main Elementary School, Port Pride Starts Here. So we'll have, we'll have new shirts, it'll be part of our PBIS, and, uh, we'll get them right away.
Cool.
All right, all right, thank you guys, appreciate it.
Do we vote on that, that new logo?
We, we, we did a poll with the staff, uh, we did like a Google form, and some of the some of the ideas, and some of the submissions were pretty funny, uh, we'll share them, uh, but, you know, so it was a, definitely a, a group effort, and then Ms. Palangis is here, and she's like a Canva expert, so she did about thirty or more, uh, logo ideas, and again, we kinda pared it down, and then let the staff kinda pick what it was, so certainly a collaborative effort. All right, thank you.
You have my email, you can send me some of those other ones.
Yeah.
Okay, Assistant Superintendent for Instruction, Dr. Natasha Waplewitz.
Better turn it off, I don't know. Um, I won't tell you what Brett's, um, idea was, thank goodness it got voted down for this, but, um, I just wanna say, we, just touring tonight was just amazing, we've seen, we've seen it come along the way, and I remember standing with Dr. Bell in one of the hallways, and we saw it completely torn down, and then the old lockers were still intact in half the hallway, and it was just incredible. And then, now we see it, we're almost there, and it's just cosmetic at this point, it's just, oh, so cool, and the furniture looks really great.
Great to see it.
Yeah, um, and just thanks to all the people who've been a part of this experience, um, all the folks are over there tonight, to the hours of the night, into early morning, um, it's just incredible, and that, you know where to find Dr. Bell, if you need him, cause he's always there, he's never here, we need him sometimes, we have to run over. Um, just a couple of things, uh, pre-K twelve summer school and extended school year finalized last Thursday and Friday respectively. Just wanting to thank our students, staff, and our administration for running a wonderful summer school. Um, even through some of the construction, um, we still pulled off a great, um, program for our students, so thank you. Um, Regent's testing was completed yesterday and today, and we have summer school graduation tomorrow at the high school at nine A M. And just simply, we're all ready for opening day, even a few days, so, almost there.
All right, thank you, Assistant Superintendent for Business, Mr. John Tim.
Thank you, so on Wednesday, the fourteenth, I attended a public hearing on Foundation Aid held, uh, by the Rockefeller Institute at Gilton High School near Albany. Um, as I have mentioned before, the state hired someone, the Rockefeller Institution, Institute, um, to conduct a survey to assess the state's Foundation Aid formula. If I put up the formula on the screen here, I was actually gonna do this, but it is like, it is the most complicated formula out there, there's not many people that even know how to analyze this formula, they just accept what is given to them. So they've hired this group to come in and conduct a study, and I went to this, uh, hearing, and basically, they wanted feedback from educational stakeholders from, and the public. So there were superintendents and assistant superintendents, representatives from all stakeholders. And the main themes really, out of everybody's speech was, they all want more money, which obviously we do, and Foundation Aid is a bulk of our aid, but the themes were, they want everything to be fair and equitable, meet student needs, easier to understand, because this chart is, not many people understand this chart, and they want it to be predictable, so that's one of the concerns that I have, is the predictability of this. I cannot, I, I can, I've attempted several times to do a five-year forecast, I can expense out, but it's so unpredictable to figure out the revenue for the next five years, cause it's been so up and down. So, um, hopefully, the outcome will be that it is more predictable and easier to understand, um, for us business officials. The bigger problem is everybody wants more money, as I mentioned, and regardless of the formula, the state isn't gonna apply this formula and give out billions more. What's gonna happen is there's some people that are gonna win from this, and some people are gonna lose, so I really don't know what our outcome is gonna be. We are considered a needy school, but listening to these other stakeholders, they all felt the same way, we all have the same problems, we have increased in spec and special education, and E L Ls, and all, everybody's getting thrown all this trauma, the kids are dealing with trauma, we need to support these, so it's happening everywhere. Hopefully, it'll simplify this, and that, they will recognize that we, you know, at least need this, the Foundation Aid that we have, that exists already, but I can't imagine them giving out more money when they simplify this formula, so as much as everybody was up there barking, somebody's gonna be losing out, and somebody's gonna be gaining, so to be continued, and I will keep everybody informed, so.
Thank you, and Assistant Superintendent for People Personnel Services, Mrs. Tanya Durie.
Um, good evening, so as Mr. Tim, uh, just indicated, all schools do want more money, and, um, where the federal government and the state government is headed is actually providing more money to school districts when it comes to early learning. And what I mean by early learning is, on tonight's agenda, you'll see that there's something called UPK Service Contracts Approval. We have a partnership with Head Start and Project Discovery to provide universal pre-kindergarten to our students who turn four years old prior to December first. Our UPK allocations for twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five was released, and we have received a significant increase to our funding. I'm just gonna provide a quick bit of history to everyone here. Um, in twenty twenty-one and prior to that, Port Jervis was, um, sending approximately thirty students to the Universal Pre-K Full Day Program, and they partnered with, with community-based organizations, and it was one community-based organization, Project Discovery, where those twenty-five spots went. Um, we increased from the, those spots to seventy students now going, four-year-olds. Port Jervis, um, the main aim of the government, New York State Ed, along with the federal government, is for school districts to start holding U, UPK in their schools, and Port Jervis, um, has heard them, and actually, there's two UPK classrooms at H B A. So where do we go from here? We, we, State Ed has heard us that we need more, and we're constantly calling them, and they granted Port Jervis quite a bit more. So we will now have, um, from seventy spots to ninety-five students will be able to attend. And what we, what's very, very important when it comes to learning is that we provide, um, choice and voice to our parents. Also, that some parents, they, they want to be with their four-year-olds, um, half-day, so we are expanding our partnership, like I said, we started with Project Discovery. This year, we expanded to have a partnership with Head Start, so we have nine students there. And then this year, we are, um, expanding our partnership with, um, a new CBO, Candy Cane Preschool Nursery School. That's going to be a half-day A M. program for, um, eleven students. Also, I was in contact with Head Start today, they are going to increase from nine students to fifteen students, I'm still waiting to hear from Project Discovery. Um, the main goal is, uh, New York State Education Department has seen the success with our UPK program, they have heard us, um, I've asked them for a lot of money, I've made a lot of phone calls, I asked them for three-year-old money, they told me, no, Tanya, but here, we will give you more UPK money. So they did do that, and I believe that they are seeing the importance in the cost that comes with, as Mr. Tim said, special education, there's a high cost. So they have this drive and thrive to get students into school earlier. They, they recognize, um, that we know that we have right now approximately, um, one hundred seventy to two hundred four-year-olds out there right now, our census and our, our data tells us that. And to, to go from thirty spots to seventy to ninety-five, and we also know how costly early learning costs. Um, and that keeps, that creates a big barrier for students, so there's some good news, um, and that's all I have for tonight.
We'll take it.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Uh, thank you to all the administrators for their reports. Uh, next up are consent, consent agenda items, which include item A, the August twentieth, two thousand twenty-four regular board meeting minutes. Item B, the minutes from the C S E meeting from May twenty-second through August fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Uh, C, the minutes for the C P S E meeting, May sixteenth and August ninth, two thousand twenty-four. D, our treasurer's financial report, June two thousand twenty-four. And E, our treasurer's financial report for July of two thousand twenty-four. I have a motion and a second for the approval of the consent agenda items.
I'll move it.
Judy, and Kathy, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Brings us to personnel employment agenda items, which include item A, which is resignation, support staff, position four, four, six, cleaner. B, resignation, support staff, position four, five, five, curved typist. Item C, resignation, support staff, position four, zero, three, five, security attendant. Item D, an appointment, instructional staff, vacancy two, six, zero, two, position two, five, eight, probationary, library media specialist. Item E, appointment, support staff, vacancy two, six, one, zero, position four, one, zero, zero, probationary, security attendant. Item F, appointment, vacancy two, six, two, two, department chairs, grade-level chairs, co-curricular and coaching appointments for the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year. Item G, appointment, support staff, vacancy two, six, three, zero, positions two, seven, two, eight, three, six, nine, seven, two, eight, four, seven, and four, one, zero, one, probationary, school monitors. Item H, appointment, support staff, vacancy two, six, three, one, positions four, four, seven, five, one, seven, and four, zero, one, nine, probationary, food service helpers. Item I, appointment, support staff, vacancy two, six, three, six, position four, two, four, probationary, teachers, eight. And item J, appointment, substitute teachers and nurses for the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year. I have a motion and a second for approval of the personnel employment agenda. Make a motion. Michael.
Second.
And Kathy, thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next are our action items. Item A is adoption of the tax warrant for the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year. I have a motion and a second to bring this item to the floor.
I'll move it.
Second. Bill, and Michael, thank you. Are there any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item B, Port Jervis Free Library Payment Schedule, two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year. I have a motion and a second to bring to the floor.
I'll move it.
Kathy. Mark, thank you. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. See, Verizon Wireless Lease Agreement with the Port Jervis Central School District. I have a motion and a second to bring this to the floor.
Second.
Kathy, thank you, any questions or discussion?
Yeah, this is on top of this building?
Yes.
And they're just renting space for their stuff.
Yeah, what they found is, they found what we already knew, they found that there's poor cell servers in this part of town, and we've always worried about it because it's a, a school safety issue. In a time of great need, if we can't use our cell phones, it's problematic, so they actually came to us, and then we, like the best face, put a blue shirt on the roof, and we were thinking, my God, we've been talking about the same thing. You know, so it's great, they're gonna pay us to solve our problem, and so, thank you.
Yes, agree.
Yes, please.
Yes, please. Uh, any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item D, UPK Service Contracts with Easter Seals, Project Discovery, and recap Head Start for the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year. I have a motion and a second to bring this.
Second.
Kathy, thank you, any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Suppose I wasn't seated.
You will abstain then. Any opposed? Motion carried. Item E, Capital Project Allowances and Change Orders, um, I have a motion and a second.
I'll move it.
Second. Kathy, and Michael, thank you, any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item F, Memorandums of Agreement, two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year attendance incentive for PJTA, CSDA, and twelve-month non-administrative personnel with independent contracts. I have a motion and a second to bring this to the floor.
I'll move it.
Judy, and Kathy, thank you, any questions or discussion?
This is the same as it was last year, correct?
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, who's saying? Harris sustains. Any other opposed? Motion carried. Item G, Appointment, Lead Evaluator of Teachers, two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year. I have a motion and a second to bring this to the floor.
I'll move it.
Kathy. And Bill, thank you. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item H, District-Wide School Safety Plan for the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year. I have a motion and a second.
Second.
Bill, and Kathy, thank you, any questions or discussion?
Just, um, a lot of thanks to you, Mr. Tim, I know a lot of work went into this and a lot of meetings, to you too, Jason, your department and everything, the meetings that I went, went to were really excellent, and, and a lot of work, so thank you.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. That will bring us to board member items, uh, board committee reports, I'm not sure if we have any, uh, buildings and ground committee? Nothing, right? Correct? I don't think we have any kicking off correctly, right? Do we have anything from Port Jervis, Nancy?
Um, no, most, most of this stuff is kind of winding down from the summer, and it's not yet winding up for the school year. The Italian festival in the community was, um, canceled and rescheduled, I believe, for September eighth. Um, three to nine, I believe, and, um, I was just gonna mention the honor flight, other than that, there's nothing.
National night out, it was rained out on the sixth.
Oh, I didn't know, even.
And that's on the twenty eighth. Twenty eighth.
August twenty eighth?
Yeah, February.
And I think we had anything from Deer Park tonight, right, and Joe, I think, and Flo, and Flo filled in, yeah. Okay. Uh, board member comments, I'll start over here, Judy.
I just wanna say that, um, this year, every September is very exciting when the kids start, but this year is even more exciting, because we're gonna be, you know, heading off some new things, I mean, really new things, I mean, uh, and I'm so excited for the kids, I can't wait to see their faces, I just think it's gonna be, it's just across the board, a very exciting time for our district, our children, our teachers, our community.
Nancy?
Um, I would just say ditto to, to Judy, and thank you to Casey's class, um, Casey is a wonderful, wonderful teacher who is so innovative and collaborative with her students, and it's always impressive to see them present.
And it's grown, you know, now that your kids are more.
Yeah, every, every year, right?
So that was, so thank you to her, that's That's above and beyond, so that's always so nice.
Mark?
Certainly, presentation was wonderful. You know, Judy, I will take a slightly different approach. Yeah, we are all really excited, and it's, and no doubt about it. But make no mistake, there are gonna be little tweaks. There are gonna be some challenges. We as a community have got to continue to remember what is the goal. The goal isn't that, oh, this, this desk wasn't ready, or, oh, that light switch didn't work the first day. The goal is that we are in the final seconds of a very long marathon to get us here. So don't live in the land of no, don't live in the land of what it isn't. Look at what it is, and look at what's been accomplished, and let's continue to look to what's gonna happen. Because it is, it is, Judy, you said it tremendously. This is a different September for everybody, and it is darn exciting.
Yes. Michael?
I'd like to congratulate Casey's group. Alyssa wasn't here tonight because we dropped her off at the Delhi last night, but she did it for all four years, and the program's just growing and growing and growing. The kids are having a great time. I'd like to thank, I needed some help with something, and they couldn't respond fast enough. Her department has just grown, and has just jumped in and just surrounded our kids, and do so much for them, so I just want to thank you and your staff personally. Congratulations and good luck to all of the principals and administrators of all the buildings, wherever you may be sleeping tonight, or wherever you may be lying tomorrow morning. I know Brett's gonna be around, but good luck to all of them. There's a, there's a lot of changes, a lot of new things, a lot of old things that we're not gonna be used to on day one. But again, it's gonna be great, and the fact that we're all doing it and working together and, and being there for each other is a, is a big thing, rather than being territorial and things like that. So we're all here for each other and with each other, and it's gonna be a great opening day coming up, and it's just gonna be a great school year, and I'm excited to be part of it. So thank you, everybody, including you, Dr. Bell.
Kathy?
I just want to echo certainly what everybody said, and for everyone to really pay attention to what Mark said, because it's true.
Okay.
Mr. Dan Kunis's presentation was fantastic, and the kids' enthusiasm's unbelievable. And I put my faith in Mr. Ken Creedy many years ago, and I know, I saw his new building tonight, and it's fantastic. Good luck to you, your staff, your kids, your teachers, and I'm expecting a lot, Annie.
Bill?
I'm just going to echo what everybody else said with an addition that I was on the Building Committee with Tomon Jovi about 10 years ago, when we even started thinking about building a new building and moving things around. And to see what I saw tonight while touring both of these buildings, and like Mark said, don't be in the no, N-O, be in the no, K-N-O-W. And we're just going to go forward from here, and giving Mr. Ken Creedy the reins to this new building and the keys. I know we're just going to move with a positive direction here, I think.
Of course. I just wanted to say, oh, Jen moving in? Our new librarian for East Main, Jen Hawes, is here tonight. That was her coughing, so I'm sorry I didn't recognize her earlier before she said her coughing. Congratulations.
She was coughing because she was wondering how she's gonna move all these books.
That's why we hired a company to do that.
One at a time.
One at a time, yes. That's great. All right. Now, I would just like to echo every member of the board. I think we all share that excitement coming into the new school year. I wish everybody the best of luck with that. Moving forward, let's bring us to dates to remember. Bill, if you could read off those fours.
Yes, I hope you all have your pencils sharpened. We have quite a few dates, so let's get started. Wednesday, August 25th, that's tomorrow, we're gonna have the summer school graduation, 9:00 A.M. in the Port Jervis High School Cafeteria. Monday, August 26th, Kindergarten UPK Orientation in the HBE Cafeteria, 6:00 P.M. August 26th and 27th, Monday and Tuesday, New Teacher Orientation will be all day in all buildings. August 28th and 29th, Wednesday and Thursday, Superintendent Conference Days, all day, all buildings. August 29th, Thursday, Kindergarten Orientation, 5:30 to 7:30 P.M., EME. August 27th, Tuesday, Middle School 8th Grade Orientation is at 5:00 P.M. at the Middle School Auditorium, uh, sorry, the High School Auditorium. 7th Grade Orientation, 6:00 P.M. at the High School Auditorium. 6th Grade Orientation, 7:00 P.M. at the High School Auditorium. School will be closed Monday, September 2nd, for Labor Day. September 3rd, first day of school for all attendees. Tuesday, September 10th, Open House, Grades 1 through 3, HBE, 7:00 P.M. Wednesday, September 11th, Open House, Grades 4 through 6, 7:00 P.M., HBE. September 12th, Thursday, Middle School Open House, 6 to 8:00 P.M., Port Jervis Middle School. September 16th through 27th, two weeks, Monday through Friday, Port Jervis Middle School Student Government Elections will be held at Port Jervis Middle School. September 17th, Tuesday, will be the HBE PTA Meeting at HBE at 6:00 P.M. And the Board of Education Meeting, 7:00 P.M. in the Port Jervis High School Cafeteria. Couple of upcoming events, September 18th, Wednesday, will be the EME Open House for Grades 1 through 3, 7 to 8:00 P.M. Thursday, the 19th, Open House, Grades 4 through 6, EME, 7 to 8:00 P.M. And September 20th, Friday, be there, mark your calendars, will be the Bell Football Game in Middletown at 7:00 P.M.
All right, thank you. Think that was plenty?
I think so.
Okay. That brings us to the adjournment of our meeting. Time is 8:01. Do I have a motion and a session? Michael?
Second.
And Bill, again, time is 8:01. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
Was that enough?
Motion carried. Thank you, have a good evening, everybody.